Last year Heather Witten counted one. I don't think we wrote about it, but it's in the...
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 22nd, 2012 Washtugle City Council Workshop Meeting. Call the meeting to order. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Plensky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee. Councilmember Lindsey.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Schumaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Thank you. We'll see if Councilmember Greenlee arrives a little bit late. We don't know that he's going to be absent this evening, so we'll hope that he makes it. Tonight's meeting is pretty much on the 2013 city budget, but before we get to that point, are there any members of the public that would like to address council? Get right to numbers, huh? Fine. Our first presentation this evening is our third quarter update. Mrs. Forsberg.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are going to go over the third quarter update first, then we'll delve into the budget topics of economic indicators, the preliminary budget, and then the next steps after we discuss the budget for the budget process. The third quarter revenues are roughly for the general street and fire funds at 66 percent of the budget. This does not include the October property taxes, so that's where the second half of the property taxes come in. So those are currently at 60 percent, and then we'll know more at the end of October as to where those are going to come in this year. An overall revenue is up 1 percent over third quarter last year. So the spreadsheet that's very easy to read on the screen shows the individual revenue line items and then where each source is at. The retail sales tax and criminal justice taxes are roughly right on schedule at 75, 74.4 percent, and pretty much all of them are online. The indirect cost recovery line item, you may notice, is a little down, and I have not done... Oh, I did do the third quarter, excuse me. That is due to our system double-posted an entry from '11, so we had to correct it in '12. So that one will be a little bit less this year, but we actually received it last year. So it's in the ending fund balance for the general fund. So that's why that one is off, but otherwise, we're right on track. Again, when the property taxes come in, we'll see how that looks. It's just a timing issue. For expenses for general and street, they're roughly at 66 percent. They're coming in under budget citywide, and departments are still continuing restraint. Again, the council one is the one that jumps out the most, as you're probably tired of hearing. The election costs came in after the 13th month from last year, so that's why it's over budget for this year. Otherwise, the departments are right on track. The intergovernmental services are paid for the year, except for the alcohol prevention services that we send a percentage of our revenue that we receive on the liquor taxes. So that one is going a little bit over this year, but we did reflect that in the '13 budget for increased line item. Questions, comments? You're all squinting at the screen. It is in the Dropbox, too, if you want to open it on your iPads, but no scrolling ahead. The utility funds, water and sewer revenues are at about 74 percent, right on track. Stormwater, I extrapolated out because we did include those extra funds from the bond fund, which made it look like it was very, very far under budget. So it's, when you take that part out, it's actually at 77 percent, which is right on track. Expenses as well are right on track for all, both funds. So there's the estimates there for the utility funds, tracking right along. And here's the fun one, all the funds. Again, the general street and fire fund looks like it's got a deficit just because of the property tax timing. The other funds that are in the negative are the funds that had fund balance that we budgeted that way, so they're all right on track. Coming right in. Questions on the beautiful big spreadsheet? So for projecting for '12, we are comparing it to the 2011 actuals. When you back out the transfers, it looks like, based on where we're currently at, we're going to end the year positive. And then with the transfers from the general fund to the various funds, that comes down to roughly $283,000 above budget. Don't hold me to it, it's estimates. It'll true up by the end of the year, but so far, we're right on track, looking pretty good for the end of the year. All right, LGIP interest, as you can see, we're raking in the revenue from the LGIP at a whopping 0.18 percent, pretty steady for the third quarter. On the dollar side, this is for all funds. You'll notice that July was a little bit higher, and that's because the state trues up their administrative fees in July, so we get a little bit of a extra payment to get some of those fees back when you don't have to spend as much on the administrative side of the LGIP investing. But other than that, it's pretty steady. Grand total, $14,000 year-to-date through the end of third quarter. And again, that's for all funds, but it's very liquid, so we can pull it out as necessary. And then the longer-term bonds. We'll start to see that balance go down because the bond funds are being expired so that we can use them, and they're not tied up in these funds. We'll switch those over to the LGIP to earn a little bit of interest on them while we wait for the projects to get going. But year-to-date, we've earned roughly $43,000 in interest on these funds. All right, and I'm going to turn it over to Dave, unless you have any questions on the third quarter. Pretty boring, we're tracking, looking good.
Thank you, Jen, Mayor, Council. This next portion of the presentation is going to set some context for budgeting for next year. We try to do this every year, just give some economic indicators, what's been happening nationally and regionally. So we'll look at employment data, housing, retail sales, and then also take a look at the CPI. So this is Clark County numbers. There are two data sets that are being tracked here. The blue line with the diamond points are reflective of the, is reflective of the actual unemployment rate, and you can see that that rate in this chart dates back to pre-recession at about 5.8 percent on the left-hand side, and then spikes dramatically as a function of job losses in the Great Recession, peaking at just under 16 percent. And it is now down as of July to just under 11 percent, so you can see the trending there. The lighter colored bars are data for the actual number of unemployed. So things have leveled out a little bit and improved, but they're clearly not down to pre-recession levels.
Is that the same unemployment rate here, about 7.8 percent, the national level as the U.S.? More unemployment, underemployment rate?
I think it's, I'm not sure if this data set that we pull from Washington Employment Security is the same data set, a subset of that one that you just mentioned, Councilman, at the national level. But I do know that Clark County's rate is higher than the national level, and I believe the state level and regionally.
Is that higher than the...
Yeah, it's, we're still challenged here in Clark County in this regard. This is a related set of data that tracks initial unemployment claims. It's through August of this year, and you can see, again, the spike during the beginning of the Great Recession, that it came way down, and then it's been trending down, and it's down to pre-recession levels, but the point that Councilman Boger just brought up about what that really means in our economy can reflect some folks that just simply aren't filing, or given up. Switching to the housing market, there's two sets of data that are tracked here as well. The pink bars reflect median sales price, and you can see that the median sales price back in '08 was the mid-200s countywide, and it went way down, and now it's back up into the almost $200,000. And then the number of sales, after dropping dramatically, has come back up and seems to have leveled off a little bit. So the market is improving, and we hope to see this in our assessed valuation in 2014. As you recall, there's a one-year lag between the assessor's data and when it hits our levy. Foreclosures has been something interesting to track. That's obviously been an impact of the recession in Clark County and across the nation. This is new foreclosures in September, just to get a feel, and you can see that huge number in 2010 dropped significantly in '11 and continues to drop in '12 countywide. Total foreclosures on the market, again, dropped dramatically to roughly half of what it was a couple of years ago, so that's very good news in terms of foreclosures on the market. And there's your average sales price inching its way up. You'll note the 195 in 2010 and the 171 in 2011. We are seeing the impact of that this year in our declining AV, and we'll be talking about that in a little bit more detail. But that 11 number that is, the end of 11, that's what we're using, January 12 number is what informs our '13 assessed valuation. In Washtugle locally, you can also see dramatic decrease since 2010 in new foreclosures. One in 781 units is in foreclosure as of now, and a significant drop year-over-year. So that's also good news and a sign that things are starting to turn the corner. Residential starts, building permits, is a general indicator of economic activity. It's not the only indicator, just like all of the others. I'll draw your attention to the year-to-date September box here that sort of summarizes everything that you're seeing, and you'll note that we're a little bit slower this year than we were last year. We had 62 starts in all of 2011, 49 through September, and we're at 37 year-to-date. So we're anticipating it'll be a little bit slower, at least in Washtugle, year-over-year on single-family starts. This is our building permit valuation, so this is a measure of the value of all of our Year-to-date, we're at 11.6 million. Last year, full year, we were at 18, so it looks like we may be trending a little slower this year in terms of the valuation. Significant projects can make a big difference for a community like Washtugle, so for example, some of the projects that we saw later in the year last year getting permits ramped up that number, and then they continue construction into this year. This just gives you a feel for what's going on countywide in terms of single-family starts, and you can see that Battleground and Camas, pretty flat relatively speaking. La Center is down, Ridgefield's up relatively significantly, Vancouver as well. There's our trending that we just talked about, and then in unincorporated Clark County, they're up as well. So countywide, there's an increase in starts, so I think that's a healthy sign for all of us, and it's just something that we'll track locally. Sales tax is another indicator. Again, I'll draw your attention to the box that summarizes year-to-date through September, year-over-year back from '08. Before the recession, almost $1 million through September in sales tax revenue, then it dropped and then began to creep up last year, and it's continuing to do that. So that's another positive sign for us, and that gives you, the graphic gives you a feel for how that fluctuates over the course of the year. And then finally, inflationary data, the CPI. First half of '12 is at 2.5, tracking with what it was last year. You can see the dramatic decrease in '09, and it slowly began to creep up. The average annual inflation over a nine-year period from '02 to '11 is about 2.25, so we're roughly tracking it what that longer-term rolling average is. I think that little bit of inflationary pressures reflective, potentially, of some of the economic activity that we're seeing. And with that, that's context, broader context in which we're operating, and brings us to the mayor's message, and I'll turn it over to Mayor Gard.
Thank you, Dave. Rose, could we get the lights, please? What we want to do from here on out, I'm going to go ahead and read through the message that will give you some of the highlights of some of the initiatives that we're putting in and some of the items that we've got put into the budget for this year, and then we'll continue with Dave and Jennifer going through more of the detail. And then at the end of the presentation, we'll make copies of the budget available for each one of you. Members of the City Council and residents of Washtugle, I'm pleased to present my proposed City of Washtugle 2013 budget. This budget continues our efforts to make enhancements to our community, maintains our current level of core services, is conservative, and it is operationally balanced. The downward trend in our assessed valuation, which slowed significantly last year, is taking a toll again this year. Our projected 2013 assessed valuation is down 3.13 percent, including new construction of 0.97 percent. Although there are economic indicators, some of which David's just gone through, pointing to a slow recovery in property values in 2012, any improvement won't be seen until our 2014 levy due to the one-year lag between when the assessor collects valuation information and when it is certified for our levy purposes. Additionally, the levy lid lift of 10 cents per thousand of assessed valuation that was passed in 2006 to fund emergency medical services expires at the end of 2012. The combined impact of declining assessed valuation and the expiring lid lift is that our overall property tax levy for 2013 will be less than it was in 2012 by $116,416. This includes using the small remaining portion of banked property tax levy capacity available to us, roughly $28, roughly $29,000, to soften the overall negative impact. Overall, our property tax levy will be roughly 3 percent lower in 2013 than it was in 2012. Other sources of revenue have stabilized and are projected to experience some growth. In spite of this decline in property values and the property tax revenue, we are able to maintain our current level of services, continue our prudent planning for future needs, and introduce some modest initiatives to enhance the community. We're able to do this because of the conservative financial practices the city has observed over the last three years. We made significant expenditure reductions in 2010 and '11, and we have continued a course of constrained fiscal management. We are also ensuring that we maintain a healthy and adequate reserve. In short, Washtugle continues to be a stable financial, be in a stable financial position relative to the current state of the economy. There are several important projects reflected in the budget that will enhance our community. Using park impact fees paid by developers when there is new construction, I'm proposing that we add amenities at Beaver, Hartwood, and Steamboat Landing Parks, and that we set aside funds to acquire new property for future park facilities as the opportunity arises. These enhancements are consistent with our parks comprehensive plan. To continue our efforts to improve our transportation infrastructure, this budget includes funds from our recently created Transportation Capital Fund to help us secure grant funding to add a safe pedestrian crossing on E Street at 20th Street, which includes enhancing the sidewalks on 20th, and secures grant funding for a significant pedestrian and bicycle improvement project along Shepherd Road to improve safety and connectivity along that corridor. It also provides further grant opportunities for system improvements. Finally, we are maintaining funding for our limited, for limited general street maintenance using real estate excise tax proceeds. The current level of funding, however, is inadequate moving forward for our overall street maintenance needs, and this is one of the issues that we'll certainly be addressing in this next year. We're in the final stages of completing the city's first strategic plan. The council will be reviewing the draft plan later in 2012, and upon adoption, we will commence a process to identify priority initiatives. To assist in this process, I'm including $20,000 to get started on the implementation of the plan in 2013. Several important efforts are underway toward finding the most efficient and effective methods of delivering basic services in our community. The Regional Fire Authority Planning Committee, comprised of councilmembers from Washtugle and Camas, continues its work on the potential of forming a regional fire authority or other service delivery options. We're also exploring multiple approaches to mitigate the cost of providing utility services. We're optimistic that our, that our community is poised to see some significant increases in commercial development activity. Economic development is a key component to our success as a community. We've already, we already have a streamlined permitting process that provides quality, personal service to our customers, and we will continue to find improvements in this area. I am proposing in this budget that we kickstart commercial development activity by introducing a fee holiday for 2013, eliminating most of our fees for commercial and mixed-use development, maintaining only our traffic impact fees and utility system development charges. The goal of the fee holiday is to incentivize development to get started sooner, to add to our property tax base, and increase sales tax revenue. Preliminary program parameters would require construction to be started in 2013 and be completed by the end of 2014. However, these benefits will not materialize in the immediate short term. Based upon recent activity levels, this proposal could cost the city approximately $70,000 in lost revenue, which is used to partially offset the cost of providing development review services to our customers. For budgeting purposes, we are reducing projected revenues from these fees by $70,000. To offset this loss in revenue in the short term, I am proposing that we use $70,000 of unrestricted and unallocated reserves. This use of reserves in the short term is an investment in our economic development efforts towards enhancing our economic health in the future. In this budget, I am also asking the council to set aside some unrestricted and unallocated reserves for the purchase of properties in our downtown core to preserve them for public uses that will add to the momentum that we're already seeing. This is an opportunity for us to invest into the, in economic development in a tangible way by providing parks or open space and public parking that will enhance the attractiveness of our downtown core, further stimulating development activity. Specifically, I'm proposing that we create a property acquisition fund with $500,000 of reserves. Any properties purchased with these funds would be for public purposes and would not be intended for repurposing for commercial uses. Specific property transactions would require council approval. In addition, we are using approximately $21,000 of unrestricted reserves to make necessary capital upgrades to our information technology infrastructure to ensure the viability and integrity of our systems and data. Our reserves will remain at a healthy level after these investments, with a reserve balance of $3,118,207, which is 27.7 percent of our operating expenses. Reserves of 16 percent of the operating budget are required and restricted for internal cash flow purposes per council policy. The additional 11 percent of reserves are unrestricted savings of more than $1.3 million, and there is currently no specified use for those funds. To assist our lower-income neighbors with paying their city utility bills, I'm proposing a new low-income assistance fund that will start with a balance of $95,000 taken from our utility reserves. This amount reflects approximately one year of late penalty revenue. Opportunities for neighbors to make donations to this fund will be available. We are currently developing program eligibility details. Heading into 2013, we will continue to use restraint in spending in all departments and accounts. This coming year, we will face several challenges. Projected shortfalls in the general and street fund in future years are looming, and we need to evaluate our options for replacing the levy lid lift for funding our vital emergency medical services. As we work to implement our strategic plan, we will need to sort through competing priorities. Overall, this budget maintains our momentum forward while practicing fiscal prudence. I look forward to answering any questions that you may have and working with the council and the community in rising to these challenges and continuing on the path forward for Washtugle. Back to the Dave and Jen Show.
Thank you, Mayor. So to dig into more detail now regarding the budget and to expand upon some of the things that the mayor mentioned in his message, we'll talk about the key assumptions that are informing the mayor's proposed 2013 budget. Focusing primarily initially in this segment of the presentation on the general and street fund, and on the revenue side, one of our major sources of revenue, as you know, is the property tax. And as we shared recently, we were projecting declining assessed value when we gave the very preliminary revenue estimates. The informal and preliminary numbers that we have now received from the assessor were almost right on target with what our projections were, came in just a little bit better. The net result of declining assessed valuation and new construction in our community is a minus 3.13 percent in our assessed valuation. So the decline in AV is continuing to have an impact on us here in Washtugle. The details behind that is about 4.1 percent was the year-over-year decline in AV of existing properties, and new construction was 0.97 percent. We had predicted slightly different combination there, minus five and a 1.5 new. The net result is it's just a little bit better than what we thought. So unfortunately, this continues to be the assessed valuation market. Again, January 12 numbers from the assessor. As you also know, our levy lid lift, which has been in place for the last six years, expires at the end of this year, and so our levy reverts back to pre-lid lift levels, and we're going to get into that in a little bit more detail in the slides that come up. And I will share with you a distinction that we have as a community that, like it or not, we have. We've, over the last couple of years, the council has taken the opportunity to bank capacity in that levy upon reversion to the pre-lid lift scenario, but because of continuing decline in AV, most, but not all, of that bank capacity is gone, simply because of the declining AV. There is a very limited amount of that banked capacity left. It's $28,000. The mayor's proposed budget includes using that small portion of bank capacity that still exists. Overall, the impact of the declining assessed valuation and the expiration of the lift is that our overall levy in 2012 is 3 percent less than our levy, excuse me, our overall levy in 2013 will be approximately 3 percent less than what our levy was in 2012. So revenue is going down in property taxes is the punchline for that. This graphic seeks to help us understand how this all works, and this distinction that I wanted to talk about is that, as far as our financial consultant knows and some of the staff at the assessor's office in Clark County at least, this combination of an expiration of a lift in a declining assessed valuation context is a first. And so we are the community that gets to sort of chart the ground for how that works and interpreting the state laws and all of that. All of that said, what happens when you come out of your lift scenario, you revert to a no lid lift scenario, and you have to go back and look at your last six years when you did have the lift, and you act as if you didn't have the lift, and you track... you did have the lift, and you act as if you didn't have the lift, and you track what would have happened over those six years so that you can reset upon expiration of the levy. So what this graph shows is calculations over that period of time without the lid lift. So this isn't what happened because we had a lid lift, but you have to recreate it as if you didn't have the lid lift. And as you can see, there's a divergence of two lines beginning in 2009, and that was when the declining AV took its toll. And what we saw there is that the highest lawful level, levy, that would have been available to the council in a non-lift, again, in a non-lift scenario, is that upper burgundy line. And that would have been if you took the year-over-year new construction and 1% if it had been available. Again, it's, it's, it's an imaginary track as if there was no lift. The purple track is what happened because of declining assessed valuation, and we got capped at our maximum rate of 310. And so all of that wasn't available, and the gap between the burgundy line and the purple line is the capacity that you banked over the last couple of years. So that's what got us through 12. So what does that mean for us in 13? What are our options as a community? What are your options as a council in approving your ad valorem levy? So based on this information, there's some options. Now, I want to explain right away that although we're showing you six bars here, there's really only two of them that are available to you, and they are the two smallest bars. The mayor's proposed budget is the crosshatched number, and that is our maximum levy that we could receive in 2013, and it's due to being capped at our rate, our max rate of 310, again, in 2013. We are showing the, the other bars, the solid-colored bars, just to paint a picture for you so you, you can, can understand the overall context. The very bottom bar is last year, or this year, for the purposes of the budget discussion, it's last year. So the 2012 year, that is our levy, $3,719,373. That was the, the assessed value of 2012 times a rate of $3.10 per thousand. Because of the decline, the 3.13% decline in assessed valuation, we're still capped at that rate of 310, but now you multiply the 310 by a lower assessed value, and so the maximum that we can do in 2013 is that $3,602,957,000. That is, as the mayor mentioned in his message, about $116,000 less, about 3% less. So that's how that's working. If we weren't capped at our rate, you would have had several options regarding using the banked capacity and the 1% year-over-year that is typically in a non-declining assessed valuation economy available to you as a council. That's not available to you, but it's just illustrative of the types of scenarios that could present potentially in future years. So to draw your attention specifically to what we believe are your options, two options, the mayor's proposed budget assumes that we will levy up to our $3.10 per thousand maximum and be capped, receive less property tax revenue year-over-year by about $116,000. It includes using $28,000 of the banked capacity from the previous years. There was much more of that available to you, but because of declining assessed valuation, that capacity has been taken away. It is the mayor's proposal that we take advantage of that $28,000 in banked capacity. Again, the overall levy still will be lower. If you choose not to take advantage of that banked capacity, then the levy will be that shorter bar at the top, $3,574,000, $3,574,125, and that is $28,000 less. That therefore is the banked capacity. So everything that we will present from this point forward is assuming the hashed line, that the revenue from property tax would be $3,602,957. If you do not take that $28,000 banked capacity, you do have the opportunity to bank it for the future. You would risk losing it, just like we risked and actually did lose much of the banked capacity that you banked over the last couple of years. So that's our property tax conundrum, and the ad valorem levy that will be before you unless we're directed otherwise is the, is the 3602957. And there's that number again, and just in summary, it's $116,000 less than 2012, about 3% less. There's other revenues that we receive, as you know. We're being conservative, which is our practice and we think is prudent every year with all of those. We are notching up our sales tax a little bit, but conservatively, tracking with what we're seeing, and then we, we know pretty well what our utility tax revenues will be because we know what the rates are going to be, and we know the increases that are already in place for the rates. And then, as you know, there is some revenue in order to keep the budget balanced, to cover the investments that the mayor is proposing, as he described, and we'll get into those in more detail in a little bit. On the expense side, we continue to be constrained with our baseline expenditures. We're maintaining current service levels. Previously, we mentioned the status quo budget, same level of staffing, no reductions in service, but no specific enhancements in service as well proposed. Outside of the use of reserves, but within the operating budget, there are some investments in our community, so we're still able to make some investments even outside of the use of the reserves that have been proposed. One of those is $20,000, as the mayor mentioned, not specifically allocated to any specific project, but knowing that the strategic plan process will, will get us into the first quarter of next year, and the council, upon adoption, and putting, putting a plan in place that is your plan, may want to undertake your highest priority or your highest priorities and begin to, to do work on those items. We thought it would be good to have some money available so that we could pursue your priorities under the strategic plan. $20,000 is, is not a lot, but it would at least give us a head start. I think it's important to note that we continue to plan for our future, and we're operationally funding ERNR for our rolling stock. We continue to do that, and we continue, as we initiated last year, to save $30,000 in each of our new, new last year transportation and building capital project funds. So we're trying to save what we can to leverage for grants later on and to, to make necessary improvements in those two areas. Use of reserves, the strategic investment opportunities, the mayor mentioned a fee holiday. It's, it's roughly $70,000, 76 is the exact number. This is a projection of potentially the revenue that we would otherwise receive if we kept all of our fees intact. The types of fees that we're talking about doing a fee holiday for, and this would be your decision, that we'd have to have an ordinance in place that would temporarily suspend those fees. These would be building permit fees, building plan review fees, zoning fees like site plan review, SEPA review, plumbing permits, mechanical permits, other types of fees for permits and reviews. It would not include traffic impact fees, which is a big infrastructure fee for us. We need those in order to leverage for grants because they're required to, to score high on grant applications, and it doesn't include systems development charges in our utilities because those are part of the overall rate plan and taking care of our utility systems. It's also proposed just for commercial and mixed-use development, not in the purely residential sector, so there'd still be revenue for park impact fees coming in, because those are only paid on residential. So we reduced our projected revenue by $76,000. That would put us in the red, and instead of cutting $76,000 from our ongoing operating expenses so that we can maintain service levels, what the mayor is proposing, that in the short term, that you strategically use your unrestricted and unallocated reserves to replenish that 76. If we don't have as much development taking advantage of a fee holiday, if you would choose to do that, then there would be less use of reserves because there'd be less lost revenue. If it worked really well and we saw projects kickstarting sooner, then maybe it would be higher, and then we would just have to track with that. But it wouldn't require the use of any more reserves than the 76,000. Short-term type of thing, hoping to get somebody that is getting ready to go, maybe to get them going sooner. Much larger use of reserves is proposed, half a million dollars, 500,000, for unspecified property acquisition in the downtown. This is to get an appropriation in place so that we could bring potential acquisitions individually before you, and your budget would already provide the opportunity for you to do it, and then you could choose or to, to make an acquisition. The idea here is public purposes in our downtown core that would enhance the private development that's going on. Park, a pocket park or a pocket open space, potentially a public parking lot that could be leveraged in the general mix of things in the downtown. It might encourage something to happen that isn't otherwise happening and just generally and overall enhance our package downtown and kind of have the city step up to match, to the extent that we can, some of the private, private activity that's been going on, and we certainly recognize and appreciate everything that's been going on in our downtown, even in spite of the Great Recession. And then a small item, we have an IT ERNR fund. We funded it at a relatively healthy level a couple of years ago when we, when we kicked off that fund. We have been working with some advisors, as you know, on our IT services and have some preliminary feedback that indicates that over the next couple of quarters, we will need to be making some investments in our infrastructure around servers and potentially software upgrades, and these will be very important investments. The ERNR fund is inadequate, most likely, to take care of all of that, so we need to give it a little bit of a boost, and that's what this $21,000 would do. We are hoping, just as a side note, we are, depending upon timing, we may be able to make some of, procure some of those assets this year out of, out of this year's budget and soften the amount that would be necessary in this regard. So at the end of these investments, I think the important point is where would that leave our reserves? As you know, your policy is that we have 16% of our annual operating budget in the general and street funds available for cash flow in the short term, and that, that required amounts 1.8 million. After these investments, on top of that 1.8 million, which is 16%, there'd be another 1.3 million, which is approximately 11% for a total reserve of 27%. So after these initiatives, we believe that there would remain a healthy reserve, and then hopefully, some of these economic development sort of stimuli that are being proposed will pay medium-term and longer, longer-term dividends just in terms of spurring economic Looking forward, we like to present this to you so you can get a feel for what your decisions around this budget and the proposal in front of you this year mean moving forward, and we're casting it out through 2015. You'll note that there's two 2014s and two 2015s. We started this last year, just to kind of give you some bookends to possibilities. You see the $283,000 in the 2012 estimate that Jen shared a little bit earlier. That right now is our best projection of where we'll end the year in the general and street funds. That's very positive news. You see a number in parentheses for 2013, estimated and proposed, and that's reflective of the strategic use of reserves. So that's the total. And then moving forward, if we have expense growth in 14 and 15 on the order of four and a half percent, that is the increase in our deficit culminating in about $700,000. This is an improved projection compared to this time last year when we shared this with you, due to the good work of our departments in constraining expenses and the $283,000 that we're projecting and hopefully will be ending with this year. And just to bookend that, on, on the other end, if our expense growth is at two and a half percent year-over-year, some smaller numbers in the deficit. But nonetheless, we continue to be challenged. We've talked about, talked about the structural deficit. We have taken steps to mitigate that, but it is an issue moving forward that we'll have to address, and as the mayor mentioned in his message, that's one of the challenges that the community and the council will face next year as we think about the expiring levy lid lift and the strategic plan and how we're going to maintain basic core services as well as try to make strategic investments moving forward. So that's the future forecast. Turning quickly to the utility funds, on the revenue side, it's very straightforward. This is an action that's already been taken. These are the increases that will be happening in January for each of the three utilities. On the expense side, continue to, to do everything we can to constrain our baseline expenditures. The budget in the utilities maintains current service levels, status quo there, and then we make, we're making our system improvement investments per the bond package and per the capital facilities plans that are informing all of those rate policies. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jen, and she's going to get into a little bit more detail about the budget, but those were the, the broad assumptions and policy proposals behind the mayor's proposed budget.
Questions? Or are we just going to keep going? Okay. All right, so this will just have a little bit more detail. We'll hand out binders at the end that has all the minutia details for you to go through at your leisure. We're just going to hit some of the high points and answer any questions at the end. For the revenue side, as we mentioned in the, in the message, we have decreased the, can I see the mouse? The licenses and permits right here, and then the building and development fees, we've lowered those to reflect the fee holiday. Property taxes, again, we're using the full 3.10 per thousand. The EMS has been decreased to reflect the decreased AV, and then the sales tax has been changed to reflect our projections as well. Overall, it's an increase of 1% between years, so it's still moving forward. On the expense side, we have programmed in the proposed uses of fund balance, so that's why the expenses are higher between 11 and 12, or, excuse me, 12 and 13, need to get on the right years. We are planning for the election and the council costs, increase in judicial costs based on legislature that's passed. More expenses are going to come through for the city, and then we've also followed the very city, and then we've also followed the various contracts that are approved through thirteen and through the payroll side. In the utility funds, again, we've programmed in the increases that have already been approved for the rates. We've programmed in the O and M side, and then we have the capital projects budgeted out of the bond fund. So this is just the O and M side right here for water sewer, and we're tracking along with the, with the rate study. A side note, we did, we don't have a slide on it, but for the low-income assistance program, we're trying to tailor off of the City of Vancouver's program that they've recently put together, and we're proposing that we take about ninety-five thousand out of the reserve balance of the water sewer fund, which reflects roughly a year of fees, penalties, into that fund to seed it so that we can get it going at the beginning of thirteen. And the idea will be that it'll be an opportunity for folks in the community to donate, kind of similar to the P U D Operation Share Heart or Warm Heart, I believe it's called, where citizens can donate funds for people. And then we're going to develop, hopefully, some relationships with the P U D so that we can utilize their resources and not have to be verifying income. People would get qualified through the P U D and then come here with information saying that they've been pre-approved for assistance. That way, it'll take minimal staff time, and we'll be able to optimize the assistance available for those in the community that need it. So we will be bringing that forward, hopefully before the end of the year, to get that going for next year. The stormwater fund also is on track with the budget or with the rate increases that were approved, and the capital expenditures will be, we pulled them out of the actual O and M account, that's why this went from five-ten to zero, and we're actually just going to run those through the bond fund as well, which is where the revenue is, makes more sense, less accounting, having to transfer it back and forth. So we'll just take care of that out of the bond fund. Some of the other highlighted funds, again, the REIT I and II, the downtown bond funds have some Bloom payments coming up, as most of you are aware. So therefore, we're kind of restricted in how much we can use out of these funds because we have to make sure we have enough to pay the payments in the future. But we are maintaining a minimal pavement management program, as we mentioned in the message. It's probably not enough to maintain where we should be at with our street program, but it will be better than nothing, and it is something for that program, but we will have to discuss in the future how else we can, what other mechanisms we can utilize for our street program. The park impact fee fund, we do have some, this is a restricted revenue fund for development, and the sandy swimming hole most likely carryover from twelve. It was previously approved this year, but it doesn't look like we're going to be able to get that done, so we will reallocate that for thirteen. Some improvements to Beaver and Hartwood Parks, and then the Steamboat Landing area, and then allocating some additional funds for property acquisitions should they arise, just because there are a few items that, or a few areas that have some potential, so if they become available, we'd like to have the opportunity to go after those areas because they fit with the park plan. The cemetery fund has requested more niche walls. Apparently, we are almost out of space for folks, or, I guess it's not folks, but anyway, we'll just move on. We are almost out of space. We need additional space, so therefore, we are proposing a loan between the perpetual care fund to the cemetery fund, setting an interest rate. Basically, we've got the payback schedule for the proceeds of each sale of each niche to pay that back. So hopefully, we have a member on the board that's willing to donate a wall if the city buys a wall, so that way we can get two installed for kind of the price of one with the labor and all those types of fees that are associated when you plant the wall. Some more information will be coming forward on that, but we have included that transaction in the budget. Traffic impact fees, we are, we have those tentatively locked up with the grant match for the Thirty-second Street and Evergreen Intersection Improvement Project. So we have fully allocated the expected revenue out of that line or out of those funds to match those grant funds for the, to make the intersection bigger at Thirty-second Evergreen, so you can actually turn, what is it, west off of Thirty-second onto Evergreen without hitting the people trying to turn the other way. The transportation capital fund, we're planning on applying for C D B G funds for crosswalk and sidewalk improvements on East Street and Twentieth, as mentioned in the budget message. There's also other opportunities that we're planning to apply for as well, so we're allocating the full three-hundred thousand for those and then the match to be determined for the C D B G grants. We've also applied for a WASDOT grant for the pedestrian bike improvements along Shepherd Road. I believe the project is like three-point-two million, and our match would be ten thousand. I mean, it's a great deal, so we're very hopeful that we'll get that, but we'll keep you posted. But we have budgeted for it, so you'll notice in that fund that there's a pretty big expenditure, but then there's an offsetting revenue from the grant, so it'll be, it'll be a great thing if we get it. Equipment replacement vehicle fund, we're replacing vehicles according to the schedule. We've budgeted, you'll notice in the line items, that we've put the cars that we're replacing in the budget. We're not necessarily replacing them with the same vehicle, but we are trying to be more economical in that aspect, so, in keeping the dollars allocated and which vehicles we're replacing. That way, we can track it all with our schedule. And then I T plan, as we talked about, we've had some initial feedbacks, some of our servers need to be replaced, and there's some other opportunities or other investments that we need to make in our infrastructure, so we'll, we've proposed to add additional funds to make sure that we get these necessary upgrades. Questions?
On this fee holiday, let me get my mic on. On this fee holiday, are we going to give a fee holiday on building inspection fees?
Yes, that's what the permit, the building plan review covers the up until issuing the permit, and then the actual building permit fee is to cover the cost of the inspections, primarily. So yes.
It's, I may have this wrong, but I thought that the electrical and plumbing inspections were actually done by the state.
L and I does electrical.
Okay, just electrical.
Correct.
So we're going to pay the state to do those?
No, that, they don't come to us. They, all of that business is transacted directly with L and I, and they don't have any, any role in that, other than coordinating.
Okay, and then, I may have it wrong, but it seems to me sometimes when we do plan reviews or even zoning, that goes out to Wallace as consulting engineers, and we pay Wallace to do that? So that's going to come out of our pocket?
Right, some, those pass-through fees, and Mitch will help me if I don't get this correct, those pass-through fees would be waived primarily in a residential context with Platts, but we do farm out some site plan review and final site plan review and engineering plan review, but currently, we cover that out of our budget already, and there isn't a pass-through on those. Correct, so there won't be any lost revenue there, and the expenditures that we anticipate are covered in the budget year over year.
Since this is mostly commercial or industrial buildings, I would assume that there are engineering reviews on the plans, that they probably, they're not something that Joe can do.
If it's a structural engineering review for the private property, and we have to farm it out to a structural engineer, we have appropriations to do that. That's infrequent, but we, if it's a large enough building, we would do that. The engineering review, where we send it to Wallace, is for public infrastructure that will be installed by a private developer. So sidewalks in the right-of-way, utilities in the right-of-way, they also look at some private circulation and things like that, and that's, but on those, we don't pass those fees through, but we do pay for those services, and that's in our budget, has been in our budget year over year.
I thought we were reimbursed dollar-for-dollar by the permittee.
Residential.
Residential only, so.
And final engineering. Preliminary, we don't.
Were there, were there engineering fees on, for example, the Black Pearl?
Yes. Those preliminary were not, we did not pass those throughout preliminary. Final engineering plans, we do.
And so it's intended that those final engineering would be, would still be billed or we'd absorb those?
That would be part.
We'd absorb.
Thank you.
The, we're basically taking under your proposal three different components, about six-hundred thousand dollars out of reserves, that's, that's a maximum.
Correct.
With the half-million-dollar acquisition, the twenty-one-thousand-dollar I T upgrades, and the seventy-six-thousand-dollar, you know, fee holiday.
Right.
Have, just so I can understand, what would, what is our current percentage of our budget, general and street budget, that is made up of reserves? What is, what percentage is reserves of that currently?
Give us a moment, we can do that math. It's something more than twenty-seven percent at the.
Okay, okay, I don't need, I don't need the exact figure, but, and so you would drop it to twenty-seven percent.
Right.
Which is consistent with prior adopted council policy.
Well, council policy requires sixteen percent, and that's kind of a cash flow, if you would.
Two months, two months.
It's two months. Sixteen percent is two months, exactly, counselor. There is no council policy specifically beyond that. Some communities have less than sixteen percent, some have more than that, so.
And we have twenty-seven.
We have twenty-seven, so at the end of this, the proposal was that you would have twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight, so roughly eleven percent would still remain unallocated, unrestricted, one-point-three million.
I'd like to see some comparisons, if this wouldn't be too much trouble, of how a city that has a similar-sized budget would compare for reserve rates, because I can see a larger city probably be able to, with a little bit more diverse revenue stream, not needing as much in reserves, and a city smaller than we are, maybe needing more. I'd kind of like to see something in our range, how that compares.
Sure, we can do that. It shouldn't be too difficult.
Now, the seventy-six thousand dollars, I'm a little skeptical about. I'm not sure how effective it would be. Have you had any track record with that from the other cities, whether it's worked to stimulate development?
I don't have specific anecdotal evidence about whether or not that specific tool has been the reason why somebody developed sooner than later, but I have anecdotal evidence that the context that is created and the perception that is created by having policies in place that are reflective of a community that is bullish on economic development can be a factor when folks are deciding whether or not to pull the trigger on something. And so I think you're right, that when something fairly significant, where there's millions of dollars involved, a few thousand dollars, even twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, five thousand dollars of fees in a pro forma, is not what makes the difference between whether or not that pro forma pencils out or not. And I've, I've had that conversation with developers, I've had that conversation with consultants that work for developers. However, the approach, the attitude, the context, the policies of a community is reflective of a feel for, maybe this is a place where we would like to do business, or maybe it's a time to get started sooner. I think to make a big difference in a sizable pro forma, we would have to do something with our impact fees and our systems development charges, but there's fairly significant consequences for us to do that, and that is, we would take ourselves out of the game for transportation grant dollars, because you must have private match to do that, and the private match is T I F fees.
I know that's been discussed in other jurisdictions, T I F fee holidays. Now, the seventy-six thousand dollars would, to the extent we don't charge it, we'd have to basically pay for it out of our general fund to backfill the revenue lost.
Right. I think the way it would work is, we collect revenue over the course of the year, and when we make our estimates, the mayor's proposed budget is an estimate of what our revenues and expenditures will be, and it always comes out a little bit different at the end, and that's why year over year, you see ending fund balance, and, you know, maybe it ended up better than we thought it would be, or not as good as we thought it would be. Pleased to say that over the last couple of years, the conservative approach that we're taking, it's been better. So in order to present to you a balanced budget, we have to account for every dollar in our projections. So we are essentially, all we're doing is saying, you know what, we thought we would take in a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars in these types of fees. Rather, we're proposing that, let's only take in a hundred thousand dollars, roughly, seven, a hundred thousand dollars. Well, we were counting on that a hundred-and-seventy to have a balanced budget, so for projecting purposes and for passing the budget, let's assume that we'll dip into the reserves for those seventy thousand. But as it plays out, we may see more or less revenue in any, any other type of line item.
Theoretically, there should be some offsetting revenue, because you'll have, well, at least in the future, you will have higher property taxes from this development. That'll be a few years before you see that, and then you'll have some sales tax revenue as well.
Exactly, and that's why, in the mayor's message, it mentions that you don't see those benefits in the immediate short term, and so just to make sure, so that we have a balanced budget for you, because you're required to have a balanced budget, you have to show that you're going into the red for that lost revenue.
Realistically, what development are you anticipating for next year?
Well, there's some activity at the port, we're hopeful, and potentially, you know, they don't have tenants or purchasers totally lined up for everything that they're doing down at Steigerwald, but they are, you know, they're, they're working down there right now, getting the roads in, and going to divide some of that up, and hopefully, maybe someone would be incentivized there.
Would this fee holiday affect the developers at the port?
Absolutely, yep, they have to pay fees. Don't know exactly what the timing is over at the old mill site, but that's a possibility.
But they will be developing anyway. Why would we be taking a pass on their fees?
To get them to start sooner. It's a little incremental, little piece, and maybe they would start sooner so that we could see some job activity, some, some construction activity, get some stuff going. Our, our guess, based on what you've seen in our budget management over the last couple of years, is although we have to program it when you pass your budget, you have to program this use of reserves, we are likely to see, again, this time next year, when we're projecting what, what the end of the year will look like, that there's a surplus of some amount, and that this was just really an exercise in projecting the budget for next year so they have to pass it. Now, I don't know if I could say that for the five-hundred-thousand-dollar property acquisition fund, that's a larger sum, but I think the fee piece, the seventy-some thousand dollars there, the twenty-one thousand in investment in the I T infrastructure, that's easily absorbable when year over year, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars either way that's happening, and it's been to the positive the last couple of years. So what I'm saying is, you probably won't end up using that reserve.
I might be, I'm sorry. You know, and I, one of the things I really try to resist in doing things like this is not getting into my, the real details, but I'm looking at something very big here that I don't, maybe it was explained, but I don't completely understand. And the slides weren't numbered, unfortunately, as I can see. But on the slide dealing, it said it's headed 2013 General and Street Funds, General and Street Fund Forecast 2011. It says less one-time transfer, 1.9 million. What was that? That was before I came on, but I'm just.
It was setting up the 750,000 to the Transportation Fund and the 500,000. So it was a shifting of reserves from unrestricted to our capital projects funds.
Okay, okay, that's a big, for a budget of a little over 10 million, that's a nice chunk. And I'll, I just have a couple more questions, then I'll, then I'll shut up and let the rest of the council members talk, ask questions. I noticed that one of the healthy increases we had was the utility tax revenue stream. And that's obviously because of our increased rates. I wondered if there was some flexibility to, rather than adding insult to injury with these high rates that people are paying for the utilities, whether we could at least adjust the rate downward to where we aren't reaping a windfall on what's really getting me to be uncomfortable with, for a lot of our residents on these rates.
Well, any, any policy change made by the council that would reduce an ongoing revenue stream, whether it's to reduce the utility rates and therefore reduce utility tax revenue, or to change the actual utility tax that's assessed, would have implications in terms of the operating budget. If it's, if it's reduced significantly, because we're bringing, we're tight with this budget, as you saw, it's basically right at the line, we would have to have a conversation about what services that we would reduce in the community. The reduction in, essentially what's happening is the reduction in property tax revenue due to declining assessed valuation is being offset by increases in the utility tax revenue stream and modest increases in the sales tax revenue stream. Those are our three big revenue streams.
I would like, I'm not saying I'm, I'm ready to go there, but there may be no traction whatsoever for taking that approach on council. But I would like to see what it would look like if we decided, if we determined just to make it revenue neutral, so that we don't realize the windfall off of, of the increased rates.
We, I think we could tell you right now what that would look like, I just got to go to the line item that shows utility tax. Is that down here?
Yep.
It's more than just that.
It's more than just that, okay.
That's all of our, it's not, that, that line item is not just our utility tax, water, sewer, storm, well, there's no tax on storm. It's not just water, sewer, it's the revenue that we receive from electricity and natural gas. So natural gas actually went down, I believe 9% was the number that we're using. While the other ones are going up, so that's why it's not a straight increase across the board. The sewer is at 10% and water, or is it the other way around? No, the water is at 20, 20.4% is the water to cover the cost of the hydrant maintenance of 256,000 that actually comes out of the fire department line item. And then the sewer tax is at 10%.
The, the change in revenue, the, the change in revenue would be, you can see that the total increase year over year, all utility taxes, including those utilities that are not ours, including a reduction in the natural gas one, is 2,413 and 12 in the budget, up to 2,585 proposed in 13. So that is $170,000, basically. So you back out whatever we're receiving from utilities that aren't ours, it's probably north of $100,000.
Something like $70,000.
Probably north of $100,000. So we would have to find $100,000 in the budget. If that was the direction to the, that the council wanted to go, I would propose to the mayor and the council that we not set aside $20,000 to kickstart strategic planning initiatives, that's a new initiative. So it'd be kind of, first out would be last in. So I would propose we not do that, I would propose we not do the 30,000 into each of the transportation capital and building funds that make, not make those investments, and then.
Actually, Dave, I would suggest, maybe you want to, rather than just talking about it off the cuff right now, you might want to, I'm not sure I'm even going there, so don't, let's not, let's not commit ourselves just yet.
Good.
Jennifer, remind me, the, even though we call it a utility taxing and a tax on the utilities, the tax itself is already built into the utility rate.
Correct.
So it's, it's.
It's the tax in the rate, but it's an internal transfer.
Correct, and then.
Correct.
The utility, the true rates go to the utility, the tax goes to the general fund.
Correct.
Nonetheless, we will see more revenue to the general fund.
Is this money pledged any way to bonds?
On the general fund side?
That's just out of the rates.
Okay.
No, that's a separate component of the rate.
Okay, that's, that's, all right, I just want to make sure there wasn't a basic thing I was missing. But that's all I have, so I'm willing to defer to the rest of the council.
On what, page 45, Water Sewer Fund, I noticed that the general government charges to Water Sewer Fund are declining. And that's what the city government charges the enterprise to run the enterprise, am I correct?
Correct.
Why is that declining?
It, it's the implementation of the cost allocation plan that we have, we updated the plan last year.
That's the revenue side, that's not the expense side.
Yeah, it's the revenue from general fund.
I think that might be coded, not the best way, I think that's the penalty fees. Because that's the revenue, so that's, it's not general government charges, that's kind of the generic bars coding. But for the actual revenue line item, it's the fees, the penalty revenues. So we, we budget those low.
Oh, okay.
But they usually come in, unfortunately, higher.
Okay, so the B in bars really does stand for Byzantine?
Potentially.
Okay, those codes are all changing for 13, so stay tuned.
One other thing that, that, from talking to people, I'm beginning to believe that the people for whom the utility bill increases are most difficult have a lot to do with the bimonthly billing. That you get a $200 hit every other month than $100 every month. And for people who are living on the edge, that's a big problem. So one of the things that I would like to see added as an option in the budget is to go to monthly billing. I think you can stick to bimonthly meter reading and just cut the reading in half. But it would obviously double the postage charges. Also, I would like to look at, in, in some ways, I think we threw the baby out with the bathwater when we went to these, our particular style of printed utility building, that we can't stuff an envelope. The ability to put a note in there that somebody's actually going to see that says, oh my God, the Cougar Creek Bridge is closed. Or reminder that the, and along with that, motocross is in three weeks. Or use it as part of the public outreach that's required by our NPDES stormwater permit. Those notices now are independently mailed, and they're not very effective, it's not clear that they actually meet the standard. So there, and, or other things that we've done in the past. I really would hate to see us go back to a quarterly four-page mayor's message. On the other hand, stuff that's actually useful, that gets stuffed, at least some people will read it, and I think it will probably be different people than we reach with a website. So I'd like to look at that. I don't think it makes sense for, to stuff envelopes in City Hall.
Thank you.
But there are, but there are contract houses that do that at reasonable prices. And in fact, a preliminary investigation with Clark Public Utilities, Bart Hanson, who is the one at Clark PUD who actually runs that side of the operation, could talk to us about that. I'd also mention that Doug Lasher, the county treasurer, has approached me about having our utility bills done by the county. Again, I think that we want to keep our front desk operation. We don't, basically all we want to do is have somebody print bills and stuff envelopes. And then another possibility, along with the county and, and the Clark PUD, are, there are contract houses. And preliminary talks with them at AWC meetings suggest that you could essentially email them the data, including the printer-ready newsletter, and they could produce it, stuff it, and mail it relatively inexpensively. So I'd like to look into those possibilities, just because I think it takes some of the pressure off the utility bill problem. And it may end up, you know, if, if people aren't so pressured with a $200 bill, they may not need the low-income break.
And we do have the capability of putting in the current bills, I know we can't stuff an actual document in there, but we do have capacity to put messages on there, which we do utilize. Like, we're starting to put the message on for rates next year, so that folks can start planning ahead and referring them to our website for more information. So we do try to put as much as we can in the limited amount of space. And our HTE system does have an e-government series that we just have not upgraded to, as of this point, to where we could do more of the electronic email billing and those types of things, where people can log on and see their usage. We just haven't gotten there yet, but those are, are things that we have been looking at for encompassing in the future.
Yeah, part, part of my interest is, is in, I mean, there are two things that I think are worth thinking about here. One is monthly billing. And, and the other is, if you want to send out a note to somebody that Cougar Creek Bridge is closed, frankly, printing it on the utility bill, no one is going to see it. You're going to need to stuff something in an envelope.
I will look into that.
As far as the monthly billing versus every other month, can people come in when they get their checks first of the, the month and make a payment?
Yes, they can, and when people talk about the monthly or bimonthly billing, we do try to help them and inform them that they can mail in a payment at any time, this is what the minimum billing will be, divide it in two, send one each month. But I, I think Paul's point is that unless you get a bill in front of you, a lot of times you don't think ahead about splitting that out. But we do work with people and, and try hard to educate and let them know of all the options available.
It just seems an expense to the city, because individuals aren't budgeting. And I'm not saying that because they're, might be low income, that, that goes across the board. I have to budget, or my son has to budget, you know, to meet those bills that are irregular. So just curious about that, thank you.
Dave?
I just, I know we don't have the details in front of us, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about the West Columbia Court Humane Society and what we've budgeted for them for this year.
Our animal control budget is, maintains current service levels. So the projected expenses for services, boarding services that we receive at the shelter, basically status quo expense line item. I think there's modest increase in the animal control budget for inflationary pressure on some of our costs. So anticipate 2013 being the same type of services. And if there's the same level of activity, same level of cost for us, for those services. Later in the year, we'll have to bring back professional services agreement for those boarding services. And that'll be one of the year-end types of things. They'll be here, is it on the 20th, on the 26th, to give us an update, as one of our service providers. Along with, we have different dates and different service providers coming back through to give us updates here over the next weeks.
Are we matching Southwest per dog, the per dog rate and all of that, and is that, is that, can you go over that a little bit?
The 2012 rate at Southwest was $120 per dog. We need to engage Southwest, the agreement that we signed with them has some increases and automatic drivers. We would like to renegotiate that, so we're having those conversations. We think that's a cost that we need to slow down with Southwest. So that's still up in the air. So right now, we're making the assumption in the budgeting that in both circumstances, year over year, it will be the same. That could change, and then we'll have to revisit that.
Okay, also, I have a quick question about the property acquisition fund, set commonly done in other small cities. And is it really necessary to spend money on properties to set up a particular fund to do that? Or is that, would be in a, you know, the general funds are unrestricted and unreserved, you know, for the most part, other than the 16%, so I'm just curious to know, why, why did we pick this number? And why are we setting up an additional fund?
I think it, it's just accounting mechanics to set up the fund, nothing specific around that. It just earmarks it so that everybody knows what those funds are for.
If they're in the general funds, though, then they're not really earmarked, quote unquote, for property acquisition.
Correct, yeah, when they're, when they sit in fund balance, they're unrestricted, unallocated.
Right, right, right.
So to put it, to put it, if, if the council's policy choice is to earmark, that's what this would do. It would earmark those funds for that purpose, and that's the proposal. And then having appropriated it, you wouldn't have to do a supplemental budget if there was an opportunity that presented itself. So indeed, that, that's the policy choice that's being proposed, is to, to make that earmark.
I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Oh, that's a, the question.
Can I ask a question about the same topic, though?
Let's, Jennifer, let's go on with your questions.
Okay, I have one more quick question, and I was just wondering if we could, because we have so many new council members, if you could go over the 310 per thousand cap as far as property taxes, just, just an overview of, of that in general for us.
There are statutory limits that are placed on various general taxing entities, of which we are one. And it's actually $3.60. However, it's not ours alone. And we share that with our friends, Fort Vancouver Regional Library, and they've passed some levies. And because of declining assessed valuation, they are capped at their maximum, and their share of that 3.60 is 50 cents. and their share of that 3.60 is 50 cents. And so we are capped at 3.10 because they're at 50 cents. So no matter what happens year over year with assessed valuation, no matter what happens with lid lifts or other things, unless there's some very specific types of actions you can take, that 3.10 cap is a hard cap. And in a declining assessed valuation economy, when you decrease the AV number and you take the ratio, you are going to get to that 3.10. And we've been in that position now. This will be the fourth year. Third or fourth year running was an unusual circumstance. So it takes away your opportunities and choices on the property tax side. Doesn't require you, you know, if we weren't capped at that, it wouldn't mean that there's all this property tax revenue coming in. You still are limited to the 1% year over year councilmanically. But when it's going the other way and you're capped, it really does take away your choices. That's a very, I'm sure, inadequate overall primer on, you know, the ad valorem levy. What I can do, Jen and I can do is, there are some good resources, I think are, where it's pretty well explained on the internet through our MRSC and through our AWC and some other websites. We'll refamiliarize ourselves with those and email those out to you. And you could take a look at those, particularly the new members, to just get a feel for those, all those different limits.
The MRSC Revenue Guide is the best thing I've seen in one place to explain it. And I've also heard it said that Washington State's property tax system is the most complicated in the United States.
And then we get the distinction of having this unique circumstances that we're dealing with. And so our, the most respected local government economic advisor in the region has never dealt with it before. And is advising us as we go. So we're in the best hands that we could possibly be in. Nonetheless, it is a challenge. But we have the answer and we know, we know what your options are and.
One question I had, and then I will, really will not say anymore tonight, was I somehow was looking at something else when you talked about the purposes of this property acquisition fund. I, I kind of missed that. Could you just recap that for me real fast?
What, what the mayor is proposing is that public purposes, park, open space, and parking would be typical public purposes that you might find in a downtown core. And so they are to complement the private activity that's going on. It would not be for repurposing those properties for commercial development.
So we wouldn't be acquiring any property, parcel assembly is what they call it in the redevelopment game. We wouldn't be involved in that?
That's not what's being proposed. It doesn't mean that something that, not something that the city could undertake, but it's not being proposed as, as part of the mayor's budget.
No, I, I'm finished. Thank you.
Actually, I've got a couple of questions. The first one is, can you give me a figure for the total amount that you want to take out of the general unrestricted reserves? Thank you.
594,000.
Just north of a half a million bucks?
Right, almost 600,000.
How does that downtown property acquisition plan work? We acquire property for public development purposes such as, you mentioned parks, you mentioned parking. So we would put up a parking structure?
I don't know that we, we would do a structure at this stage of the game. Probably a lot.
Acquire the land so that in the future, we could put up a structure, and we would pay to put up the structure?
Or a lot, I think.
Surface lots.
Surface lot.
I, enlighten me, Sean, please.
Surface parking lot. It's not a parking structure.
Parking lot. Okay. But we would develop that using our funds. Okay. Can you give me some idea, and, and you've addressed this for the West Columbia Gorge, as I understand it, maybe, maybe I missed something, though. Are there any, what I would call subsidies for the West Columbia Gorge and the children's services organizations this year, aside from the building?
West Columbia Gorge, any payments that we would remit to them are for services rendered. We do provide that. So there isn't a direct payment as there was in the past. It's all on a per-dog charge, and I think that was clearly the direction of the council over the last couple of years. We do, as you pointed out, provide a facility free of charge to the organization. So in a sense, there's some subsidization with that.
But we're required to do that by the agreement we made to get the building updated?
You're talking about the, the dog shelter?
I'm talking about West Columbia Gorge Humane Society, right? The, the building.
I'm aware of that.
Right. The building, so there, that's the only subsidy there. The building across the street, so operationally, in the status quo budget, we have, what is that amount? $7,500, same as last year. In
To the Children's.
To the Children's Home Society.
And then we still have the 5,000 for the community education recreation program.
Those two are still in play, same amounts as last year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Connie Jo?
It's hard going down the line. I forget, make notes. I remember you said something I wanted to ask a question about, and it's gone. Couple of things as far as the parking. The underground parking that we have, how much is that used at this time?
In, in.
I know it doesn't belong to the city, but it, we're, we're looking at the overall convenience of the city's parking for our downtown area. Just curious about.
If, I don't know if this will answer your question or not. We had a company that was potentially looking at taking over the remaining space within the Washougal Town Square building. Had they done that, David, remind me what we needed to come up with as additional parking spaces. We were still 50 short.
So is that for employees or would that be for?
Employees.
Employees only, then. It wouldn't even accommodate people visiting the building?
Correct.
See, that paints a different picture, doesn't it?
That, that developer is one that is asking us more often than not now for his future purposes of what he may do downtown when we are going to address potential parking issues. Because we give credits and incentives to developers developing in the downtown that say that they need in their building properties themselves, less parking than what we require in other places in the city.
So that paints a huge picture for why we need this parking.
At some point, if we are successful, if we are mildly successful, we will have a parking problem.
Is the property?
And that, and that would be the case even if we had standard streets that are wider than what our streets are. Right now.
Mitch, remind me, other than Main Street, do we really have a street downtown that you can adequately park on both sides?
Nope. Main, Main is the only one that's 60 feet wide right now.
Little bit of love on the north side.
One side.
Yeah. So that complicates it a little bit farther.
And property is down right now. I mean, if we were going to purchase property, it's certainly a good time.
Potentially.
Potentially. Does the Woolen Mill provide parking to the city or, or for, for?
They do for their employees and for their patrons of their store. In addition, we have an agreement with them to utilize some of their parking for access to the tunnel area itself. I think beyond that, they've got some very loose agreements with the soccer and softball folks that utilize their fields over on the east side to be able to park down there. They've got one segregated parking lot that they allow them to use.
Okay. Would you have, what do my notes say? Studies as far as done on a city. What are the things that help bring up AV in a city? Is it, have you, have you seen studies on that?
Of what will increase assessed valuation? Or what will attract new construction?
New construction. Or bring people in to buy up the, the glut of empty homes?
Well, I think what I've read would tell me that the sense of place that you have is one of the primary reasons why a business or somebody would locate somewhere. I think we have a very special place, and that's why we're poised, I think, to see some activity. And we've been saying that for the last couple of years as, as others regionally. And I think the mayor's proposal is a modest attempt to try to shake that loose a little bit. But I think the overall environment of a, of a city government with respect to, to its bullishness, if you would, toward businesses is helpful. Having resources available for folks that are kicking the tires, like our, our Quidah organization, where we can really come alongside personally and work, work with folks, kind of beyond the capacity of our, of our team to really guide folks through some recruiting that can be done through that. But I think your longer-term policies around transportation infrastructure, parks and open spaces.
Schools.
Schools. Thank you, is very important. All of that type of stuff makes a place. Having land that's available when somebody's ready to go. So working with the port. The ports project is unique, I believe, in the region. And I think that will serve us well. The, the mill site on the water is unique in the region. Very special. I think a few years from now, or 10 years from now, or whatever it will be down the road, we will be, I hope, very pleased with some of the things. But things are a little bit stuck, I guess, right now. And I just, another comment, just on a broader sense, not, not thinking about 500,000 or 400,000 or 600,000 or whatever the number would be. The expression of policy of a, of a local government around its downtown. In the past, this council went into debt, took on debt to, to make a significant improvement in the downtown in order to make the downtown a special place. And we have a, a special plaza. We have, that was a significant poly, policy expression of the council, and it has, and I don't want to use the word tied up because it was a positive thing to do. However, it is requiring the bulk of our real estate excise tax revenue stream to pay for that. Now, if that is an appropriate role for the government, the local government, to invest in the downtown, that was, that was what the city did at that point. This proposal is a modest proposal along those lines, except it doesn't consider debt. It considers strategic investment using some of the unrestricted and unallocated reserves to do something smaller scale and similar to make some improvements downtown that come alongside the private investments that, that have been happening. And it really is a policy choice for each council member and for councils to decide whether that's an appropriate role for our community to do that. And that may, may or may not be, but that is certainly the mayor's belief and, and therefore his proposal.
Another question about fire versus the regional fire authority. Just a quick comment on what happens to that line item if we go through with the RFA.
If our, if an RFA is formed and the voters, if you ask the voters to, and then they indeed establish one, then there'd be a transition where there would not be general purpose expenditure by the city of Washougal or the city of Camas for those services. We would lose some of our revenue ability. And that would transfer over to the regional fire authority so that they could undertake those services. And then depending upon how the RFA was set up, there's a lot of details back and forth depending upon how the RFA gets set up with a benefit charge or without a benefit charge. And that economic analysis is something that's still to be reviewed in, in some detail for you as a member of the RFA committee coming up when we, when we get into that. So it wouldn't happen for 2013. The projected timeline, if you recall, is that we would be, any ask to the voters, if that's indeed where the councils go, would be in, in 2014. So we're still a couple of years out for that.
So it'll all pretty much stay the same for two, 2013?
Right, right. At, at the broadest sense, the 20, the proposed budget in 2013 maintains service levels at their current level across the organization. And then there are a couple of initiatives that have been proposed, some of which don't require the expenditure of reserves, and some of which do, and most significantly, the one we've been talking about, the property acquisition. Otherwise, it's basically a status quo budget year over year.
The $3.60 limit, which when Fort Vancouver Regional Library passed their 50 cent levy, cut us down to 3.10. If there is a regional fire authority, does that do the same thing?
Without a benefit charge in the mix, there's a dollar-for-dollar or a penny-for-penny rate transfer to the new entity from the city.
So we would be responsible for the revenue but would have no control over the budget?
Revenue would go right to the authority.
Right, but it would come out of our general fund, in effect.
In effect. It comes out of that pool.
Right.
Unless it's set up in a different way where some of that would come from a benefit charge. And then less, there'd be less of an impact to us in terms of our rate. And that, that is the crux. That is one of the key policy choices facing the RFA Planning Committee and then ultimately the councils moving forward, whether or not to ask the community about that.
And just so that everybody knows, we use the phrase downtown core. What does that mean?
Our definition of downtown core?
Yes.
Our definition of downtown core, Mitch, correct me if I'm wrong, is the railroad to Highway 14, River Road to 32nd.
Correct. Yes. I knew that, but I suspect there are a lot of other people who did not know that.
That's, that's the, that's the commercial portion of it. The west village portion extends on the Sugar River, which is the residential portion of the core over to about, I'll say about nine.
But for example, does not include anything on E Street? Then, kind of to give an example that, to, to, for Connie Jo's question about at the groundbreaking for Fisher Investments building, which at that point was going to employ 350 people, they're now doubled that. They're going to have 700. And there are no minimum wage jobs at Fisher Investments. I talked to Ken Fisher and, and I asked him why, Camas, and he said, you know, I'm from Foster City, California, and I started my company there, and we built it into from Foster City, California, and I started my company there, and we built it into over a thousand employees, and it's a, it has billions under management. It's a huge firm. And when I walk into City Hall, they say, take a number. And when they get around to my number, they will tell me why I can't do what I want to do. When I walked into Camas City Hall, without really knowing who I am, they came out from behind the counter and said, how can we help? And both he and Sherry said that that's a big piece of why they're in Camas. And refresh my memory, how much is, are those two buildings worth? Fifty million dollars?
They're about to finish the fourth building.
Are they? So, you know, that's, that's a big deal in terms of, of how, how you respond to people. And, and I think that this, this makes sense, this makes, you know, it's not much money, and it, and it'll help us along.
Completely agree.
Other questions from council?
I forgot to ask this earlier, the Twentieth Street improvements, can you go over those just a little bit more?
Right. So as you know, on the East Street project, and on East Street, there's limited crossings, official crossings, and we've identified that Twentieth is kind of an informal, people are crossing type crossing. And it's also one of the key connections into our downtown from E. So from a safety perspective slash economic development perspective, we believe that it makes some sense to enhance that connectivity. And so CDBG is often an opportunity for those types of things. So we're hopeful that we might be able to have that be one of our portfolio of requests for CDBG funding this next cycle. And we would put in a, a crossing there that would not be the type of crossing that costs hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars with a, a traffic stop light and all of that. But there are devices that you can put in that give pedestrians the opportunity to actuate some flashing lights and some different things, and you can stripe it, and you can do some islands and such, so that it's a safe way for folks to get across and be more officially recognized. And then once they get across, as you know, as you start to head south on Twentieth, the sidewalk, there's some gap in the sidewalk. We haven't designed that specifically yet, so it's a concept. So the Transportation Capital Facilities Fund that the council established prior is, is intended to, to provide the matching dollars for projects in the community. We haven't identified all of the CDBG grant asks that we might make, and you know, we have to have public hearing, and then the council gets to, you know, decides what, what to do, but we are specifically listing that one, because that's one that we've gotten, developed to a point where we thought we could mention it to you specifically at this stage. But we want to, you know, we want to try to maximize our CDBG opportunities, so also appropriating unspecified project dollars in there, so that when we come back with you on CDBG, you would already have appropriated, and if you wanted to make further applications, you would be able to do that. So that's, that's that project. The other project in that fund is a, is a very significant project, three million something dollars, and we only would have to have ten thousand to match that. That would be fantastic, take care of that entire Shepherd corridor. If we could do that, that would be great. So there's ten thousand in there for that. Jim's already made that application, and we hope to communicate with our legislative folks and Washdot and others, and it might be helpful for members of council to participate in that, so we're, we're trying to pull that together to, to know what to say and when to say it, but.
You're talking about the Shepherd Street?
Right.
Yeah, I already, I passed some information on to state legislators about that as well.
Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, I do have a question, though, about the Twentieth Street project. I don't have the CIPs in front of me, the capital improvement plan. Was that on the capital improvement plan, the Twentieth Street?
It's not on the CIP.
No. I know it's the Shepherd Road plan, or the improvements were.
Shepherd was, yes.
Okay.
So that's why it's not using TIF funds.
Okay.
Can't use TIF funds, because it's not on the plan, but it's a, maybe it should be on the plan. But CDBG would be an eligible opportunity for that.
Connie Jo?
Not a hundred percent familiar with the sidewalks around the schools, but, or the sidewalks approaching the schools. I live pretty close down to Jem Degard, and I, I might take that little road every once in a while. I realize they're all bust, right? All students that go to Jem Degard are bust, is that?
I don't know.
I know, that's a school district issue, but the approach there is frightening. And I, again, would assume that that'd be the city responsibility, possibly a, a shared responsibility with school districts. So I'm just wondering about all the schools, maybe I need to go on a little drive around all the schools to see them up in person, which I did weigh on when I first started campaigning, but I don't remember the details so much. Can you address that?
You know, Hathaway, we've pretty much taken care of most of it around Hathaway. We've got a grant proposal in with safer routes to schools for the Thirty-Fourth Street area and those areas around Gauze. We've done some work around the high school as well. Jem Degard's, it's an interesting one, it's not in the city. The approaches to it are not in the city.
County, yeah.
There's, I think, Jim, you were looking at a, at a fix that was kind of unique, where for the most impacted neighborhood, that over there in the, in the Sunset View area, we actually would go across and create an agreement between the school district and Washdot to go across their yard out there and do some sort of a fenced walkway that would literally cut right across and get there, but that has some peculiar things to it as well. Jem Degard will be a problem, excuse me, it won't be a problem, it'll be a challenge.
Yeah.
It's, it's all wrapped into, a majority of it is also wrapped into the school district's long-term construction plans and using the curb property out there where their administrative offices are, and things that have been delayed for a number of years to different phases of those projects, until that's, that's completely resolved out there on Evergreen Highway.
Okay.
And I think in addition to the Safe Routes to School Grant Program, which I believe, Jim, is a hundred percent, we don't-
That's correct.
We don't have to-
You have some in-kind now.
But we don't have to budget.
That's right.
Right, so that's why you don't see that in the budget, because we don't have to budget for it. It's a great program. We feel pretty bullish about that, too, just based on our communication, so we're hopeful that, that our community will see some enhancements from that program. There is definitely the possibility to advance some of the PED improvements that are on the plan, as Councilwoman McDaniel was just alluding to. We have some sidewalk projects in there, some are in proximity to schools, others are not. We have lots of needs around sidewalks, so I think there may be opportunity in the CDBG in the unspecified area for us to figure out which ones those would be. There's the Addis Street one we already are doing, and there's some more connectivity that could happen there, that's an obvious one. See, the, the program likes to phase projects, and they look very favorably upon that, so we'll keep, you know, chipping away at that issue.
I like the idea of the flashing light, I know Camas, because I drive Camas, has one right there on Everett, and it's certainly effective, because I drive that every day in a school bus, and I really like the way those, when you, when you approach it, you push a button, like a crossing, guard at a, a crosswalk at a traffic signal, and those lights start flashing, and everybody stops, so it's a great project, I think.
And that, that crossing would be very similar. It would be a lot shorter holes, I guess you could say, but the lights would be LED, and they would flash as well, and it's a wireless type system, so, and then it has solar and some batteries that charge, so you don't have to hardwire, so it's a, a less expensive system.
Yeah, good. Probably makes some sound, too, nowadays they. Well, people with disabilities that are walking the streets, so many of them make sounds now.